We'll call the February 14th Stillwater Planning Commission Meeting to order. The process this evening will be for to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative. Then we will open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. And then before closing the public hearing, both staff, the applicant and/or their representative, will be provided an opportunity to respond and provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed, and then we will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. With that, we'll move to the first item on the agenda this evening, and that's a text amendment. It's Text 22-02: Consideration Discussion and Possible Text Amendment to Chapter 23 Land Development Code. We'll listen to, we'll hear staff first.
As stated, this is a proposal for a text amendment for our fence code, which is Section 23, 121, exceptions, setbacks for fences, et cetera, and projections into yards. The purpose of this is to review and recommend for a text amendment to the Land Development Code section, as previously stated. So, the reason why this is coming to you, since the beginning of 2020, there has been a total of 60 variances that have been requested, and of those 16, 13 have been specifically concerned, fences for homes that lie on corner lots. That's approximately 21% of our variances since 2020. In 2020, there were six of the 21 variances requested were of fences on corner lots. In 2021, five of the 18 variances requests were fences that were on corner lots. And then, in this past year, we had two of the 21 variances requests were for fences on corner lots. So far, we haven't had any this year. So this is what our current code looks like, very, very short, kind of just defined in the table. Mostly, corner lots, in most cases, are just considered double frontages. And so, people wanted to put front on their secondary frontage, they've had fences projecting into them. So, this is what's being proposed. We're adding definitions to define front lot line, front yard, and side yard specifically for this section when it is defined. Here is, down by the table, clarifications, just in the text portion. The main thing is going to be in, is it this one? Yes, okay. "In three where no fence, hedge, or visual barrier taller than four feet shall extend into the front yard, a side yard fence abutting a secondary right-of-way or a road access easement not opposite the front yard shall meet the front yard setback requirements," which is in defined, is that right? That's what I thought. "Front yard shall not meet the, yeah, side yard requirement." Yeah. Anyways, it should be side yard setback requirements, because I was like, it should be six feet. In most of our residential zoning districts, it is six feet, so instead of the 20 feet for required for a front yard setback, it would only be a six-foot setback from the property line.
Setback, the property line is the line between the easement for the street and the front yard, is that right?
It can be, it's wherever it's set. In most cases, here in the city, there is some sort of right-of-way there, so there'll be like a sidewalk usually, in a neighborhood, and then a property line, and then it would be from that property line, would be six feet on a corner lot. Are there any questions for staff?
Where was the six feet?
Yes.
Where's the six feet?
Oh, so, yeah, I didn't put it in the slide, but in your packet, there is example of a variance that we received on a corner lot. And the six feet is established based on the verbiage, shall meet the required, the side yard setback requirements in the zoning district, which is, if it's RSS, any residential district, it's six feet. So it refers back to the bulk standards.
So the side yard currently is?
As defined here, the side yard means?
No, but, no.
Oh, now?
Currently.
Currently, we don't really define a side yard when there's a double frontage.
You're not defining the setback on a side yard for a fence? Or you're not defining a side yard?
Not defining a side yard on corner lots at this time.
Okay, that's not, I'm sorry, that's not what I'm asking. So what I'm asking is, if we could find out, we could currently understand, for a front yard, we'll start with a front yard, okay? For a front yard, which would be the address for a residence, that's the front yard is where the address is, correct? The street address is the front yard?
That's not currently what our definition states, but in most, how you go off of it, but yes, we can proceed as if that is...
Okay, let's rewind my question, please. The definitions that we have here, are these definitions anywhere else in the city ordinance?
No.
Okay, that answers that question. So, given the definition of what a front yard would mean and a front lot line, that would be the side of the property that abuts the street, which is the street address, is that correct?
Yes, as defined in this new definition.
Okay, and so if we're using that definition, then what is the current setback for a front yard?
For a front, it's twenty feet.
Front yard fence, 20 feet?
Yes.
Okay, and the proposal is to be?
The proposal stays the same.
The front yard is still 20?
Yes, because that is still references.
Okay, so that's unchanged?
This chart. Yes, nothing's changed. It's only, this only changes clarifications and to allow for that secondary frontage to be defined as a side yard.
Okay, so, so when we're not, we're not addressing rear yard either, we're just giving definition for front lot line, front yard, then the side yard would be the side yard that is what connects between the front and the rear?
Correct.
And so really, what we're talking about more is a corner lot, is that really what the concern is?
Yes, this is clarifying corner lots, which is what, as previously stated in variances cases, that we have seen a high number of, that we're trying to address.
Okay, so I may have missed it, that this is specifically corner yards. There's an example about for a corner lot.
This, so, to keep from going down a rabbit hole, we tried to keep it as simple as we could, and just defined it here, and it doesn't negate what's already established in the table that was set forth prior. We're clarifying that the side yard that is in the secondary right-of-way or access easement is considered a side yard, like, a side yard, and meets those side yard requirements.
Okay, and so currently, on a side yard, secondary roadway, what is the requirement for a setback?
Those are considered, right now, they're considered a frontage, they're required to be 20 foot off the property.
They're required to be 20?
Yep.
And the proposal is to go to?
Six foot, basically.
Okay. All right. Those were my questions, and just understanding, I have other questions, but I would like to leave some opportunity for the rest of the commissioners to comment, question.
I didn't see in here where it says there's a, you're changing it for 20 to 16, 20 to six feet.
Yes, because it's referring to the bulk standards in the zoning code, so it's, when it states the setback requirements, those are the requirements set forth in the bulk standards for each zoning district. And for majority of our residential districts, it's six foot. So that's, those are most people who are putting up fences, as your resident, when we come into these corner lot situations. We have different regulations for those for commercial.
I have some more questions. Does this specifically state, and perhaps I've missed it, where this specifically states that what we're talking about is a residence and not a commercial property?
No, like I stated earlier, that this is just trying to keep from doing the domino effect of our code. So we, this is the simplest way we could address how our code was previously written to address our current situation.
So this addresses both commercial and residential zonings?
Yes, yes.
Because the exemptions I see are for governmental-owned public properties, those are exempted, correct?
Yes, yeah, those...
Currently, and that's the same. Okay, so we're talking about for regardless of if this is a commercial or a residential?
Yes, this is a blanket, yes.
And then, this is, there's no distinction between a screening fence that would be solid and would restrict vision versus something that was more transparent, say like a chain link, for example? Treat them all the same, question?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, I'll go again. So, what I'm not following, and my largest concern with what's proposed, is that this could be intruding upon sightline triangles, and I am concerned about vehicular pedestrian safety?
Yes, and that's referred to in another section about you cannot obstruct sight of triangle anywhere.
Okay, but it's not in what we're looking at tonight?
Correct, because that's not...
It's pertinent to this because it's safety?
Yes, but it's addressed in another section of the code, so we didn't need to restate it.
Okay, it would have been nice to have the reference to know that. Any other questions? I don't have any more.
In the table that it shows, just to be clear, it shows type, which fences, hedges, height zero to four, exempt. All setbacks are exempt, I'm not sure I understand what that means.
Right, so if, so if you have a house and you want to put a little four-foot white picket fence, you can put it in the front, but you can exceed four foot.
All right.
But you still have to meet the safety protocols of transparency and all of that, which is in another code.
So, what's it exempt from?
The bulk standard setbacks in the code.
So you can put it anywhere?
To the property line, you can't go outside the property line.
You can't go, okay.
Yeah.
So in the background, it talks about, "The proposed changes will impose the side yard requirements for the respective zoning district onto the secondary front yard." I'm, it's probably in here, but I'm trying to find out exactly what the secondary front yard is.
So on a corner lot, you have two streets, so those are considered double frontages. So the secondary is going to be, as defined, the primary front lot line and front yard is that, that's going to be addressed off, so the new one's going to be your secondary, instead of...
So it's around the corner?
Yeah, yeah.
Side yard, okay.
So would that be fair to say that that would be the side yard from the new definitions, the new proposed definition?
Correct.
Well, just, there's a lot of words here, so, so to boil it down, if I'm understanding it correctly, you, if this is approved, then you would have less variances coming to you for people that want to put a fence between 20 and six foot on their side yard?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And usually, by the time we catch them, they're already in place, code enforcement finds them, and then they're already coming, and they're already approving them, because they exist, so.
Okay.
This just helps from having to do that.
So if I, if I'm on a corner lot, I have a side yard, and I want to move my fence, I can now move it to six feet, from six feet to the road? I don't have to ask anybody?
Correct.
Okay.
Six feet to the lot line?
From the property line, so you would move it within six feet of your property line.
Six feet of property line, the road's going to be much farther away.
You can go, if you're at 20, you can now go 14 over, leaving that six.
You can gain 14 more feet of yard enclosed.
Enclosed, yeah, okay.
All the questions for staff? All right, I'll call for, if we have anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joel Kornstrom, and I live at 201 South Doty Street in Stillwater, 74074.
Repeat your name, please.
Joel Kornstrom, you need me to spell it? Okay. So, so, my name's Joel, I'm a graduate student at OSU. My wife and I graduated with our undergrad on this past spring. We got married two weeks later, and we also bought a house during finals week, that week, and we live on a corner lot. We've been renovating our house kind of ever since, and we're looking to build a fence on our yard. We have two dogs, one of them can jump pretty high, and we don't want him to be able to get out from our fence. And so, our house being a corner lot, we don't have much yard that isn't currently considered front yard, and so that would leave us with a pretty small amount of our property that we could build a fence around to allow our dogs to exercise in. And so, this, if this change would be passed, then I would appreciate being able to build a fence with what the changes would allow. I was, I was in the process of applying for a variance until I heard about this meeting and this amendment, so I thought I'd come and say that I support it.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present our alternatives.
All right. So, I'll tell you findings, it's a simple one. A text amendment to the Land Development Code is needed to address the height limitations of fences in the secondary front yard, that's the findings. Your alternatives is, one, accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed text amendment as presented. Two, find that the text amendment is appropriate for the definition in identifying amendments and recommend, recommend the City Council approve the request. Three, find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a future planning commission meeting. Or four, find the text amendment is not needed and do not recommend that the City Council approve the request.
Any questions?
I did have a question, you said there was, this was a change to six feet, correct? Or is that somewhere else in the code?
Okay, so this, the height currently is, since it's considered front, you can only have a four-foot fence.
Right.
You can go to now, it's not considered a side yard, and you can go within six feet, it can go up to eight foot.
Okay.
So the six foot's referring to the required setbacks set forth in your, in the bulk standards for the zoning districts.
Okay, so the six feet required setback is less than 20, which it used to be?
Correct.
Is, that's not in any of the text we've gotten here, so it must exist somewhere else?
Yes.
And we aren't dealing with that change?
Correct.
That's not a change that involves us, okay?
You mentioned the variances that came before, in the last couple of years, three years. Did you, did the city approve all of those?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
To clarify, the Board of Adjustment hears those variances, and they have approved all the ones that's been presented to them. It's not city staff.
Okay, but they've all been approved?
Correct.
So the question I would have for staff is, going back to my initial concern about vehicular pedestrian safety at these areas, particularly probably in an alleyway, if this is allowed, how is that going to be vetted out to make sure that there's not a visual obstruction that caused those, a concern for auto pedestrian safety?
It's going to proceed as any structure that obstructs the visual triangle upon a complaint by a citizen, because we don't, we don't have fence permit process right now, so we can't.
So we'll, so we'll just wait till there's a problem?
Yep, that's how we've done all obstruction.
Okay, so if, once there's a problem, but whatever meets, whatever, so say, so say I buy, I buy a new home, and there's not a fence, and I put a fence in, and I have a corner lot, and I put my nice big six-foot screen fence up on that side, and I have obstructed that sight triangle, someone gets hurt because of that, then whatever processes happen, happen, and someone comes back to me and says, well, you need to change your fence. And I said, but I did it according to all the criteria. How's that play out? Who's now at fault? Who's telling me that I have to change that, and why?
It's going to be code enforcement that's going to be notifying you, you would be written up for violating the visual triangle section.
And how am I going to know that if there's not a fencing permit process in place?
Well, nobody knows. Everybody wrecks a fence, and it's just like anybody puts a structure, they don't know until they get a violation. So, is how it would be as if any other structure.
So that's, it's that risk versus the Board of Adjustment looks at each of these individually and approves them, which has been happening, I guess, quite frequently, which is why it's here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think I'm clear.
But we currently haven't had any off of an alley.
I will say, usually, I'm not sure if she said that earlier, the ones that come in front of the Board of Adjustment are already, fences are already up, unfortunately. There are a few that do the right thing, like the gentleman before, and come forward, and then usually, code enforcement goes out to look at it, and then they notice other neighbors, and those neighbors have to come forward and get the variance, because they already had the fence up. That's kind of what, when I attended those meetings, was what was happening.
So why do they come get a variance after they got the fence up? Because code came out and told them, there's a problem?
Yes, correct.
And they always come out because there's a complaint?
A complaint, or someone is calling in to say they need a variance, and they go look at the property, and then they notice, okay, the street over, they have a fence, they never got a variance, they're a corner lot, and it kind of ripples down the neighborhood, usually.
I assume a variance wouldn't be approved if safety were an issue?
Correct, yeah, but like I stated, out of the 21% of our variances that we received, none of these have included an alley of any sort of situation. And usually, the right-of-way, there's enough right-of-way when there is an alley, so the property line is further back.
And I think that's a good point you bring up, Jaclyn, because a lot of Stillwater, we don't have alleys in the residential areas, but we do in the commercial, and this is over commercial and residential, correct?
Yes, and commercial, usually, their screening, that goes through a whole different process of a review. So their fences is included in their building permits, in most cases. So it's reviewed then.
In most cases.
Yep, in most cases. Because they're, usually, they end up abutting a commercial where they're required to put up screening of some sort.
Any other questions on our findings and alternatives here? Thank you. Commissioners, anyone considering a motion or perhaps more discussion?
Oh, I don't, I don't control that. There you go, thanks.
Thank you.
I would say that I don't have a strong opinion on this. So I'll propose that we accept the findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed text amendment as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes, 41. Next item on the agenda is a specific use permit. This is SGP 22-09. This is consideration, discussion, and possible action, including a recommendation, approval, or denial of an application from Blake Shelton, SSS Enterprises LLC, to operate medical marijuana dispensary at a property address as 107 West 10th. We'll hear from staff.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Diana Hood, I'm the Associate City Planner, and, like we've just established, this is a request for a specific use permit at the address 107 West 10th, and it's for a medical marijuana dispensary. Here's an area map of the subject property. As you can see, it's just off of Main Street and 10th, which is just a bit south of here. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. This building is currently vacant commercial space, and has been previously, previously used as retail. Here is a Google Street View looking west off of South Main Street. This is the subject area on the Future Land Use Map. The Future Land Use Map is part of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and is used to predict future uses and needs in a certain area. This particular area is marked down for commercial uses. The applicant is here to answer any questions from the commission, but before that, are there any questions for staff?
Any questions? I don't see any, thank you. At this time, we'd ask if the applicant would like to come forward and add any additional information to the commission?
Good evening. How are you guys doing today?
Good evening, doing well. Can you state your name and address for the record? She's going to ask me.
Yeah, no worries. No, my name's Joshua Smith, and 1907 Twisted Oak Court in Shawnee, Oklahoma. And this is Blake.
Hello, I'm Blake Shelton, address 717 South Ridge Drive, Stillwater, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you for your consideration. Both of us are veterans, and we're looking forward to be able to be a part of the Stillwater community and provide jobs, and actually be able to help patients in the local area, so.
Any questions from the commissioners? Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask if there's... At this time, I would ask if there's anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present findings and alternatives.
Your findings are that, one, the Oklahoma State law allows for medical marijuana dispensaries, and secondly, that the Land Development Code allows for the use of a medical marijuana dispensary in the Commercial General Zoning District with a specific use permit. Your alternatives are to accept the findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented, or find that the specific use permit is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and do not recommend that City Council approve the request, or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Any questions on findings and alternatives?
How long does a special, or how often does a special use permit have to be renewed?
So a specific use permit generally stays with the permit holder or the address. So for example, if, if the business were to be kind of sold to another person, they would then have to renew their specific use permit.
So it's not transferable?
Correct.
But it's for how long a period?
There's not a set
No period?
Period of time.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Commissioners, anyone entertaining a motion?
A motion to accept the findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is a short-term rental. This is short-term rental application 0095. We'll hear from staff.
All right. Okay, so under the ordinance 3435, short-term rentals are to be licensed with the city and if it's located in RSL, RSS, or RT zoning districts as part of the licensing process, property owners within 300 feet of the subject property are notified of the SGR application and have 30 days within which to file an appeal to the license. The current case that you have is for 1111 West Nap Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It's near the intersection of Nap and Monroe. The planning commission is the hearing body for SGRs. Hearings will be held as a specific use hearing exception. There is no staff report or further presentation. The criteria, criteria by which the planning commission is to review the SGR application is in Division 4, Section 23.115. Attached with the consideration criteria highlighted, the applicant for the SGR has the burden for this case. Please note, if you have any questions of private restriction and covenants arise, the city cannot enforce private restriction and covenants, but the planning commission can give weight to them as part of the deliberative process.
All right, thank you. I would ask if the applicant is present this evening. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Trevor Montgomery and I represent Lark Properties as the applicant. The company is owned by my wife and my sister and my brother-in-law. We started the business in 2018 and we currently own two active short-term rentals here in Stillwater, one at 842 West Moore Avenue, which we've owned since March of 2018, and we also own one at 819 West Moore. We've owned since 2020. Both are actively operated by local support staff as well as managed by us remotely. To date, over the years, we've never had any major issues with our adjoining neighbors or major complaints from any noise or ordinance violations that we've been made aware of. The bulk of our tenant base is usually traveling for various reasons to come to events here in Stillwater, whether it be for visitation of their children at OSU, which was kind of an alluring thing to us. We, my sister and my wife and I both grad, we all three graduated from OSU and had some aspirations of owning property but weren't quite ready to jump off into the long-term rental, you know, less managed property game. So this gave us a means to do both by having ongoing, you know, oversight of the properties, maintenance of the property, something that we could kind of keep short-term ties on. I would say the active average time of people in our homes, the other advantage that we have is they're usually there Thursday through Sunday and they're usually there for shorter times because they're here for some kind of event, whether it be to come to the Special Olympics to take children, to visit family, to come to some other graduation, or, you know, football game, or something more associated with it. It's actually has opened my eyes about how many events are in Stillwater over the last few years. But we have very high-rated reviews with both services we use, which is vacation rental by owner, VRBO, and Airbnb. We have good, superior ratings with both services. We also, in accordance, pay the standard, of course, property taxes as well as occupancy taxes to the city in accordance, as well as employ, again, short-term people to help manage and take care of things. We upkeep the properties. We've invested in the properties and continually invest in the properties to maintain that high level that is adequate with more of a hotel stay and is necessary really to keep a high quality tenant. We typically like the property to be a higher level, which in this case this property is, so that we don't have to deal with a lower price point, which then sometimes can bring about multiple individuals or people that might, you know, jeopardize that process and overcrowd the property or have things that we don't want to have there. And so we've been fortunate with a higher standard in the class that we've done to maintain that, and that's kind of what we hope to achieve here, and that's our goal. And I did bring some materials. I apologize, I didn't know the audiovisual options today, but I did bring some photos and reviews that I'm happy to pass around with the committee if that's
Yeah, if you could just hand them to Chelsea here.
You'll see some are existing anyway for the time being. One of the, I guess, interesting things that we've learned ourselves over the years is that the people who come and stay usually will be very forefront in telling you why they're coming to the property, whether that be the things I described, or I think they just want to feel out what the property's ability is based on what they, any different from what they see. So they're very upfront and vocal about it and they want to know they're going to have a good stay. So it just goes with a constant communication that we have with them through that time. They're secure. We have ongoing security monitoring services on the property, so even when they're not being utilized, there's constant oversight. Our temporary staff actually lives within a block of where they are now, and we've had a good active relationship with the neighbors. And so back when our properties on Moore are in a flood plain and we've had a small amount of flooding in one case, and our neighbors were very quick to bring us that attention. And then we had an ice storm, as we all know here, in 2020, and I actively paid for tree removal for both of our neighboring owners because the tree in one case was on our property, then the tree on the other was not, but I couldn't actually get quick enough movement. So we took the initiative and paid for that. But again, it's all in our best interest to keep the properties as well-maintained and sufficient so that we are good citizens, but also just good business owners really. So I'll take any questions.
Okay.
You say you have local management involved?
We're act, we're the full-on management. We actually manage the bookings and through the services, but we have local people we employ that are, you know, temporary as needed, but they clean the property and then subsequently her husband is a construction and does some of the maintenance as needed real quick that we can't get to immediately. And then we have, of course, the landscape management is a third party we manage here locally, high school friends of ours.
And this will be the third property?
Correct.
For you? Okay. Does, you, you're going to market it through two VRBO and?
VRBO and Airbnb are pretty much the two largest, you know, third-party sites to utilize.
So you can screen prospective renters?
That's correct. It's very helpful to that. I mean, if somebody's just going to outwardly, I'm sure, lie to you and be dishonest, but we also have the ability to, you know, not re, we have a lot of, I say a lot, we have a fair amount of people who will rent again from us for either the same event or not. But yes, usually, and people are pretty open about it, to be surprised, they will call, we'll have, the ones we usually screen out the most are parents that want to have their children stay there and we require an age limit of 23, and if they're not, then we just, or if they're, usually if we see somebody is, lives in a very close proximity area, we usually do not allow that, or if they want. But we get a lot of, it's ironic to me, it's surprising to me how many people want to come back and get married in Stillwater who went to college here. And so we accommodated a fair enough of people so we can have a bridal and a groom party, and that seems to be a big contention of what we get, is a lot of that. And again, they're not there much, but they do like to use them because of proximity to each other.
So did I understand correctly, your limit is 23? You don't allow renters that are under 23?
Yes, that's correct.
And for how long? What's the maximum period you're allowed to rent?
We don't set one, but to be honest, the longest I've ever had is two weeks, and that was usually a very one or two-off case where somebody here in town had like a, an issue with their home that insurance is paying for the rental, like a flood or a, you know, leak in their home. And we had one where they rented for two weeks and they weren't even really there. I don't know where they went, but they weren't here for their two weeks. It was fantastic for us, but, you know, there. We'll get some contractors that work for the university or something that will come from out of market and they'll stay for a week, but that's again a rare, I would say the average stay is three days.
So every time someone wants to rent it, they fill out the form for these, either one of these?
They go through the service and they have
And then you, you get to see everything that they've put down, and that's how you screen it. I mean, Airbnb doesn't screen for you. You do your own screening.
To create a profile for Airbnb, you have to have a valid driver's license and submit that to create a profile, and then through that, that comes through us, and then you can choose how you want to screen. You can either acquire that each submission is done, or they can book it, and then you still have the ability to cancel them so that it does exclude them if they don't meet your criteria.
How many times do you refuse a renter? Or just roughly what percent?
Yeah, it's not often. I mean, it's probably 5% of the time.
So one in 20 gets refused?
Yeah, it's pretty rare.
And you mentioned some reasons to do that, right?
Kind of some of those I alluded to where, you know, they may live in Perkins and they're renting and our antenna go up pretty quick, that something based on the age is not checking out, and we're last and foremost wanting to be the one that's, somebody's allowing a group of, you know, people that might be there for something that they're not driving very far from. That's probably the only one or few times we've ever had anything like that. We get some people to just outwardly ask, hey, we're going to throw a, you know, a birthday party for my niece or something like that, and then we start asking additional questions, so they have to kind of give us a full thing. And those are probably the handful of times we've ever declined it. But 95% of the time, it's, it's usually an event that we can at least research and tie it to, and again, that's where I found more events that happened here than I ever knew. But they'll come for, I call them secondary athletic events here, which are probably not, you know, the events of collegiate athletics that we know, but they might come for a bike race, they might come for a rugby match, they might come, and they'll come from other, further away locations.
Do you have rentals in other locations in Oklahoma?
I do not.
Just these three that you deal with?
Just these three.
Have you had any bad renters that you'd wish you hadn't rented to?
Oh, it's always hindsight in 2020, but nothing, nothing that was just out of the dr, we've been really fortunate, I feel like, and we had some TCU kids that came through and a door got broken in, that's about all. But, you know, that can happen. We also had a young couple that she slipped and fell through the door, so I mean, it's kind of six-one, half dozen the other on that.
But no neighbors have ever?
No, we've got really good rapport with the neighbors we have now. They're in close proximity, but again, it's, if this were me, and I'm a homeowner myself and certainly don't want a neighbor that's causing any issues or not maintaining their property or any of that, but, you know, Monday through, let's call it Wednesday, Thursday, there's usually not anybody there other than our people coming and going as needed to put the trash out, to clean the property, do minor maintenance things, and then usually a Thursday or Friday through Sunday is the only time there's people there, and they're kind of coming and going usually. So I think I answered your question, but I may
Yeah, no, that's good. Thanks.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
How many renters are you intending to allow at this property?
So for this one, it's, it's a slight bit higher end, and I say that it's not a tremendously amount more than our others, but our others typically are eight. This one would probably be a little less than that because it doesn't provide itself to have the layout of, it's basically a three-bedroom home. So in our other properties, yes, there's three-bedroom, and so you'll probably have a master, call it, that accommodates two, and you'll have another kind of secondary with a queen size bed, and then you'll usually have a bunk bed with maybe, maybe two. So I would say max a six.
What's the parking like at this house?
I'm sorry?
Parking? How large of a parking area do you have for being able?
So it's a standard two-car garage with a standard two-bay, but a longer drive. So it lends itself usually for the average renters that we have to more than accommodate that.
Commissioner Williams, could you, could you bring your microphone up? We can't quite hear you.
Sorry. So it shouldn't tend to flow into the street?
No, it shouldn't really. I mean, I can't swear somebody won't occasionally do it, but one thing, listen, I went to college here and I see people park on, you know, yards and things, and that's the first thing we see on our cameras, and it happens once in a while, and we usually tell them really quickly, like, hey, don't park on the yard, okay? But it's a one-off every once in a while. We just make sure, because of obviously our maintenance, to not let that happen.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask if there's anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this item? Come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Awelda Rodriguez Carrion, and I live in 1117, I'm short.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. I live in 1117 West Knapp, which is west of the property in question. I do have a question. I have one image. Is it possible to show that image on the key? You get to see all my classes here. Okay, so I moved into 2010 with a four-month-old baby into this neighborhood. I'm a researcher, so I did my job. I looked in Stillwater for almost a year and a half looking for properties. It's a big investment. So I look at FEMA flood plans, I look at the city zoning and see what uses are allowed and what kind of Shenanigans can happen here. I look at the OSU Country Club because they are right, almost right next to my property, and I look if they had any future expansion, and since this is a dead-end street, also the possibility that this dead-end street will be open and become a through street because I'm planning to have a family, and this is kind of, I was looking for a family-friendly neighborhood, which I found, and I actually didn't even know what I was buying. So I, my initial investment was looking at the property. I talked to some neighbors and some of them are still here today, they will talk. But I was greeted, I was coming from Phoenix, Arizona, and I was greeted with a very nice surprise. Phoenix is a fourth-largest city, so when I just, the day I was moving, I had a teddy bear for my son, I had bread that some of the neighbors bake, and I had a little thermostat for my house. So I was very moved. This is beyond my research of what kind of neighborhood I was buying an investment into. So I believe that the definition of a neighborhood goes beyond its geographical location, and it also involves the social aspects, which actually I was looking for, the physical attributes of the houses, and also the local culture. So yes, football games are a big thing in Stillwater. So I kind of look at my house a little bit away from the stadium because I knew what happens with parking, so I kind of anticipated some problems already there. But I believe that when you bite into a neighborhood, you actually have some but I believe that when you bite into a neighborhood, you actually have some common values, and these are the qualities of, of, of social interactions that I am actually buying, I invested on, so, um, these social aspects either hinder or enrich my daily life. So the zoning is RSL, which is a residential single lot, so right now currently, it's allowed for a bed and breakfast, which I assume that there is a host, and the host will be there if I have a complaint, okay? And the host will be there if actually something happens, like it has happened before, that we have a bunch of trees that are really all are starting to fall, and one of them knocked out the, the, the power line, and caused a little fire, and we were, all the neighbors were like, immediately get up, you know, make phone calls to the city, and, you know, uh, limit the fire, or the danger, because I have a neighbor next to me. So right now, the request is for a short-term rental, to wish to come into this neighborhood, and this is something that we are kind of experiencing all over America, these Airbnb rentals, and there are many platforms for this, but in my eyes, this is a business, this is not a neighborhood endeavor, this is a business where people come in and out, and there is a business transaction, and I don't think that people that come in and out really care about my feelings, they don't care about if I left the trash out, I believe that, uh, the neighbor, the, the intent of keeping the house and the property clean, I think that will probably pan through, but then the ephemeral things like the noise, and who is there, and the fact that our backyards don't have any fences, it's so open, actually I can see my, my neighbors from the back street, because we have a pond, and when I'm there, in shorts, everybody sees me, everybody knows me, and if I have a problem, I can call in a neighbor, so I just don't think that right now, changing that into a short-term really fits into this neighborhood. So since I'm a researcher, and I look for things, I believe that the city has given a 90-plus permits for short-term rental rentals, and I would like to know if there is a plan to put forward, because I think this, this type of enterprises have a place on the city, but I would like to know if there is a plan of where this short-term rental should be allocated, and how many of them should be permitted in a neighborhood. So in my eyes, this will start eroding the fabric of, and the social aspects of our neighborhood, and that's why I put this photo, because we have had a tradition for a longest time, which, um, of these summer podlocks, where we close the street, and all the neighbors come together, and, um, we just get to know each other, so when I'm in Italy in the summer, teaching a class or something, I can call up any of my neighbors, because I forgot the trash can bin, and it, I left it outside, and I can have somebody, can you put it inside? Or anything in the street, we're all watching, we all know each other's kids, and that's what is at stake here, I think the property will be taken care, but if we start giving these permits slowly, I am very concerned of what we're doing here, and, um, I have a letter to submit, these are the neighbors that are actually opposing this change in our zoning, and I just will leave it up to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Did you say there's an Airbnb near your house?
No, not currently.
Or you just say if it were an Airbnb?
If there were, yes.
If there were, but there is not, okay.
Yes. Thank you. At this time, I would ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nile Obley, I'm at 1023 West Knapp Avenue, um, there's a number of reasons, and, and she has stated some of those, that I'm opposed to this application, but the biggest reason is this is a dead-end street, it's always been for over 50 years, it's been a family-friendly residential area, and kids are out there playing, and, uh, they're, they're a big investment, for, I'm sure you agree, in all of our lives, whether it's as parents, with their grandparents, neighbors care about one another, and so that would, that is one of my big concerns, is the safety of our children, uh, if this property would, if you would approve this application.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? If you come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Ann Obley, 1023 West Knapp Avenue, and I have a letter here that I would like to read, it is from someone in our neighborhood who wants to remain anonymous, and they asked me to read this letter. It says, "We have asked that our neighbor kindly read this letter on our behalf, for the reason we will share momentarily, we ask that our names and address not be announced at this time, however, we will be happy to speak with members of the Planning Commission to answer any questions they may have, if we can do so without disclosing our address. Like many of our neighbors, we have children, beyond the concerns of stranger danger and increased traffic, which are real and legitimate, we have a more pressing and particular concern, our children are adopted, and threats from biological family are a real possibility. We purchased a home on a dead-end street in a neighborhood where our neighbors are known to us, you have heard from others here, or will hear, about the unique character and neighborliness of our street, we have done and continue to do everything in our power to choose a home where our youngest son can ride his bike, play outside, and where our family can feel secure. If a short-term rent, if short-term rentals are allowed on our street, there will be nothing to stop biological family or their agents from staying feet away from our front door. The safety we have to care, the safety we have so carefully cultivated, to the extent of our power, will be jeopardized. We are not the only family on the street with adopted children, and concerns regarding biological family. Still others on the street have different circumstances, but equally legitimate fear of stalking, harassment, or threat from abusers. None of us feel comfortable announcing our names and addresses to the world via YouTube, but our concerns are valid nonetheless. Many things make our street unique, but in light of these very unique circumstances regarding safety, we ask that you would find, find that the specific use permit is not appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the City Council approve the request. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward and speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michelle Crew, I live at 1107 West Knapp, and am owner of the property immediately east of the property under review. I, along with my neighbors, although I don't speak for my neighbors, but I, I have similar concerns about security, safety, parking, the long-term consequences of allowing a short-term rental on our street, um, our neighborhood, our street, and that to the south of us, has seen an increase of homes being bought by students, OSU students' parents, and then having college students and their friends and roommates live in those homes, so we have a fair amount of renters, um, it's my understanding that on Will Rogers, which is a street south, couple of streets south of us, we have another, um, short-term rental, and so this neighborhood is slowly becoming more of a group of properties that are owned by individuals that don't live in Stillwater, some that don't even live in the state, and it is becoming less of a neighborhood. There are somewhere off maybe one or two people, but about 50 people that live on our street, on West Knapp, and we know exactly who is living on our street, and who, who The idea of having somebody rotating in and out, and having a new neighbor every week, is just, it, um, I would ask what the long-term plan is for the city, allowing short-term Because it's eroding our neighborhood and the neighborhood directly south of ours. I don't know what the benefit is of disrupting a neighborhood of 50 Stillwater residents, so somebody from out of town can purchase a nicer property and make more money. I don't understand why you would make a decision to approve that, when you have several citizens of Stillwater that are trying to maintain a family-friendly neighborhood. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Lance Rice, I live at 1116 West Knapp Avenue, uh, thank you for your time, and for hearing our objections, I appreciate it. Putting a short-term rental, uh, in our neighborhood, I just, when my family came to the neighborhood in 2004, we did not know how special this neighborhood was, we had many World War II veterans and professors, uh, living on our street, some of you may recognize the names, Fights, Glover, Moore, the Moores were the grandparents of Brady Moore, who I think you guys may know, Cat, Shorts, Kelly's, the names on the list go on and on, one of the things we learned from these great families was that we were now part of a great community that looked after each other, we're invited to the yearly neighborhood picnic, which has been going on for over 50 years, they knew that getting everyone together in one place over good food would spark conversation and good relationships, we've watched these relationships grow in my short time here, just under 20 years I've lived in this neighborhood, neighbors helped with lawns, clean up after storms, coach running clubs, attend dance recitals, and even buy overpriced scout popcorn to support the kids. Some of these kids, uh, came to live here through closed adoptions, with a short-term rental in the neighborhood, we do not know who will be in the community, from week to week, will it be someone from their previous life? No one knows. My point is that a corporation, uh, is not buying up abandoned or dilapidated houses and fixing them up, they're putting a commercial, day-to-day business in the center of a great community, the corporation is using the hard-earned equity of a great neighborhood that was built by great families to run their business, if this corporation is going to make this a safer, better community, then they're welcome, but if they are here to make it less safe, or less of a great community, then we ask that the Planning Commission say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition?
I think I'm the tail end.
Are you it? Okay.
And apologize, I'm wearing my basketball clothes in case the meeting ran long.
That's all right.
Uh, my name's Dan Lorenz, I live at 1019 West Knapp, and, uh, about 10 years ago, I moved here to go to work out at Lake McMurtry, as director out at Lake McMurtry, and I was driving around town, trying to look for a place to live and move, and, and come and stay and retire, and I saw the address, West, West Knapp, and it sort of rang a bell, drove over there, and I said, oh, this is this great neighborhood, when I was in college, and, believe me, that was a long time ago, but it was a great neighborhood 50 years ago, and I said, this would be a great place to live, so I checked in on the house that was for sale, and it was owned by Bob Fite, Lance, uh, the guy he was talking about, he was professor at OSU, and he raised his two daughters there, and he built the house back in the 60s, so I ended up buying the house from, from his two daughters, and I've lived there for 10 years, thoroughly enjoyed it, got to meet all of these people, and the thing about it, this is an area that's two blocks long, I mean, it's not like it's forever, it's two blocks long, about 50 people live there, we had joined the president's new beautiful home that's been built, so our neighborhood more or less encompasses the new president's home, so it's a great place for us to live, we cherish it, it's a great neighborhood, it's a classic neighborhood in Stillwater, and really and truly in my mind, it ought to be preserved, been there that long, it should continue to stay that long, how, could I ask a question of the staff?
You, you can, you can-
Or anyone, how, how many streets, how many houses in Stillwater are already available for short-term rental?
We, we don't have that information, but you, we can log, log that into the record, and-
I'd just like to ask that, because I assume there's quite a few, sorry.
What I, what I was gonna say is you can ask the question now, and when, once we, we get to another point in the proceedings, we can ask that back of staff to respond.
Okay, I would just like to know how many homes are already available that are for sale, that are available for short-term rentals, why do you need to take a, a neighborhood that's two blocks long, and put a commercial enterprise in the middle of it, right across the street from the president's home? Anyway, I just suggest to you, if any of you commissioners, I appreciate y'all having us here tonight and giving us our chance, but if any of y'all would like to have an Airbnb, or, or Verbo, on one side or both sides of your houses right now, vote for this thing and get it over with.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and at this point, we have an opportunity to let the applicant make any, address any of the concerns that were addressed this evening, and staff could also address any concerns that were addressed this evening.
I'll just sort of kind of redirect on a few of the common threads that I think I, I took from that was, uh, sort of the element of community when you have a short-term rental, so I live in Tulsa, and I'm the president of my homeowners association in Tulsa, and we have similar actual processes there in Tulsa, as you do here in Stillwater, to which they make application, a radius differential, limitations on capacity, so in our neighborhood, which is getting older, has a few Airbnbs, I too live on a dead-end street, which backs up to a pond that has some things, and around the corner, there is one, and then another one just down the way, uh, on my street, I have three young daughters, I have a neighbor that has, I mean, many neighbors have many, many small children and, and younger children at this time, none of us which worry about sending our children out into the, into the neighborhood or the streets, um, all of them are similar to my scenario concept, where they're actively managed, you can tell, I get notification, because I am on the homeowners' association board, and through that process, just made aware, can't really do much about it, but it's a part of the process, so in my own experiences, that's not been any kind of an issue that I've seen in that part of the world.
Can I ask you a clarification on that?
Yeah.
So are you saying that as, um, I'll tell you what I heard, I just want you to verify, I heard you say, or understood you to say, that as president of the homeowners' association, when a property in that neighborhood is rented, you're notified, and then you could let neighbors know?
It's not, it's not really that way. It's not really that way. We have a third-party management company, and because they're tied in with the city of public filings, they just get notice and they just let us know. There's really not anything...
There's nothing actually put in place. Okay.
Yeah, from the HOA level. Now, the residents can do the similar process that we're doing here and go discuss and make sure that it applies or try to make their concerns known.
Okay, so you're saying there's the opportunity to know about it when the application is made, not when it's rented?
Correct.
So I misunderstood what you said. Okay.
Correct. I'm sorry, yeah.
No, that's okay. So I want to clarify.
And then, you know, as far as just generally speaking, that I heard this last gentleman, the two-block radius, my current homes are on a two-block radius. And there are actually four on that particular street. And again, speaking with our neighbors, speaking with the other residents in our area, they've never, now, not many of them have young children right now. They're a little older in age, but one of them has some grandchildren that are frequently there. She's got a pool in the backyard, and they're constantly over there. And I constantly talk to them whenever I'm over at the properties. So I've never heard any concerns directly from that experiences with them. So I mean, from our own experiences and how we maintain and manage the properties, we have not yet had any experiences that were negative to disassociating the neighborhood community, my own personal experiences of disassociating the neighborhood community. Or I think one of the, maybe not apparent concerns, was that it will downgrade the property value. But we make, you know, there's actually one that I know of, and I'm sure the residents can tell me, one long-term rental on this street. And just again, going back to redirect to my model, we're benefited by constantly reinvesting in these properties. Whereas a long-term rental has, you know, market rents dictate what they're willing to invest in that property. And those tenants are there for a period of time, whether that be nine, 12 months. Maybe they stay for a couple of years, given their educational experiences or what they're doing. But our tenants are turning over, and we therefore have to constantly be mindful of what that status of that property is, so we're constantly reinvesting in that property to maintain that, so it keeps those property values up and actually paying a higher level because market rents typically don't dictate that you can pay top dollar for a property in most communities like you can if you actually are doing something that's more beneficial from a higher rent caliber. So I would just add that to the conversation. So...
Questions for the applicant? I do have one question for you. So you have described your personal lifestyle as very similar to what you're proposing here. Do you know how long that those short-term rentals have been in that adjacency to you and your neighborhood?
Yeah, one at least three-plus years now. And I think the other's been roughly about the same. We're seeing a small influx as well. I mean, but it hasn't so far disassociated the fabric. And we have a few actually neighbors that have bought some of the smaller properties on our neighborhood for long-term rentals, you know, at a higher caliber property type. It's somewhat inevitable if, you know... I work in finance. I see different ones in our community and in here. You know, you're actually seeing, and I'm sure you've seen this part of the process, you're actually seeing some apartment complexes do some short-term rentals applications, I'm sure. Same kind of premise is it's a better model for them if they can make it work, and it seems to be fitting a demand that's there and upkeep the property at a better level.
All right.
Some questions?
Yes.
So when did you buy this property on Nap, approximately?
This property, I bought in November of last year.
And you bought it for the purpose of, for the short-term rental?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Just curious.
If I'm being somewhat honest, I have a daughter that's a sophomore in high school right now, so there's a chance that she could be, you know, we'll see what happens because the kids make last-minute decisions on education. But if she ends up here, there's a likelihood she could be, you know, living in it with a roommate.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I bought a nicer property. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Staff, would you be able to address the earlier question about the number of short-term rental?
Yes, so all short-term rental leasing or leases are through the city clerk's office? Oh, my gosh. I want to let me... Okay, I wanted to make sure I removed her thing before I totally forget about it. Okay, so short-term rental rentals are through the city clerk's office and filed through there. So I can't give you a number on the current active short-term rentals that we have, but I could obtain that information if you so wish.
Thank you. Any other questions or anything that I wasn't tracking? Any of the other commissioners have anything else from what we heard? Okay, all right. So we don't, I guess, findings and alternatives. We don't necessarily have a finding and alternative. It's just approval and...
Yeah, so your alternatives, I have a baby slide.
Fantastic.
I have a baby slide. Approve the application, defer for additional discussion, deny the application are your alternatives.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, thoughts?
So does the city have any limiting plan on how many short-term rentals they're going to allow for the city in certain areas, anything like that?
So your question is, have we... Are we projecting any way of regulating at a finer tune of radiuses and that kind of thing as discussed?
Anything in terms of just the volume of short-term rentals that we have in our neighborhoods?
Not at this time, but if you so wish, we could proceed with doing a tax amendment to focus on STRs.
Does, do HOAs have any power over how much they allow in their neighborhoods as well?
That is dependent on each HOA and their covenants. And then that's just a civil matter at that point. We cannot enforce those.
Name of the chairman? We couldn't hear that.
You couldn't hear her. Could you just repeat that?
The last one about the HOAs.
Okay, I'll repeat that. HOAs, they can, I'll make eye contact too, so you can read my lips too if you need to. HOAs, it's dependent on what they put in their covenants. If they, they can regulate and that becomes a civil matter. The city cannot enforce those. Those are their own entities.
So you are saying that HOAs can regulate it?
They can if they, if their covenants say so, yes.
Any other questions from commissioners to staff? Or on our... All right. Thank you, Jacqueline.
You're welcome.
Discussion amongst the commissioners?
This is one of those that, you know, however we vote will bother me when we get home, when I get home and think about it. Because I definitely see, you know, the passion that the neighborhood has for maintaining, you know, the environment that they have. And I appreciate that. And I can see it's genuine. I mean, several of you are here. And, you know, I listened to what you said, but I also see that, you know, someone that makes an investment has certain rights that come with that. And I generally think that the fears of a short-term rental are typically overblown in people's minds. They rarely materialize. It's true, though, that you're not going to have a relationship with short-term renting people that show up. So, yeah, it's just a tough situation always to, those are just very distinct, competing interests that there is no partial answer that solves that, so... So I wasn't helpful to the conversation, just telling you what I thought.
I'm glad we were able to have a hearing and get everyone to express their interests and their concerns, both for and against. It's very important we do that in a public, in a very transparent way. I'd have to relate from my own experience, living in Stillwater for nearly 40 years now, in an area that's not too different than the one we're talking about tonight. In fact, I would love to own a home in that area. Because I like to go running, jogging, and they have a jogging course right nearby. It's a great location. But there's, if anyone wants to add to this, I think there's several ways a piece of residential property can be held. It can be held by the owner. It can be held by a long-term renter or short-term. Are there any other options?
That covers basically how, yeah, how that would work. I mean, sometimes they're corporate, sometimes a residence can be corporately owned.
The situation in Stillwater seems to be a little bit different than some other places I've been with the huge university and a lot of turnover. But I can, in my own experience, I've known owners, long-term renters, haven't known any short-term, but I can tell you, sometimes you wish the owner and the long-term renter weren't such because you'd just as well get rid of them. It's not really easy to get someone. A property or any of us right now has not been, has been abandoned for 20 years, right next door. And that doesn't contribute much other than a piece of property that's gradually turning into a jungle. When you compare those three, owner, long-term renter, or short-term rental, I'm not sure that a short-term rental is really always that bad. Long-term, an owner and a long-term rental sometimes can be a disaster. Not too far from us, there've been crack houses. And how do you get rid of that? That can be a long deal to get rid of. So when comparing the three of them, I find it hard to be really negative about short-term rentals.
I'd have to echo the comments that have been made here this evening. I've lived in Stillwater a little over 40 years. Different parts of town, different neighborhoods. One of the most special neighborhoods that I grew up in here in Stillwater as a child was one that was very much like what you described. All of our backyards ran together. We had a lot of camaraderie. Everyone's kids were parented by all the parents on the block. We did have, you know, block parties. If you didn't get out of your yard, everyone was going to wind up in your yard in the summer. So you wanted to go to bed, the neighbors were still there. I mean, it was just, you know, all one big community. That, there's so many positives to that, and those are things to really embrace. I've also had an opportunity, that was when I was a child, I've had an opportunity as a homeowner with small children to be in a neighborhood that was comprised of a lot of other young families. One young family left, sold to someone who had college-age kids. Those college-age kids moved in right next door to me with their friends. They were underage. They were out of state, away from their parents, had some freedom, partied every night. And I had my two small children, two of my three, in the front bedroom. And it was fairly common, they would come in and say, "Mommy, mommy, mommy, daddy, somebody's out in the front yard." 10:30, 11:00, midnight, because all their friends were there. And this is a long-term rental situation. Not a whole lot I can do about that. Get up in the morning to go to work, neighborhood, the yard right in front of me, right next to me, full of beer cans and beer cartons. What do I do? I don't know these people. Then I finally had an opportunity to meet the owner face-to-face and explain to him what was going on in this home that he owned and where his children were doing. It got better. Then that child graduated and the next child moved in. Then we moved out of the neighborhood. I tell that story and I share that just to say, if it had been a short-term rental and I knew who I could get a hold of when I had these situations, it would have been a whole lot better for me. And we may have stayed in that neighborhood a lot longer and had these ongoing relationships with our neighbors. But when you separate from a neighborhood, you all have a really strong community, and we can tell that because you're very passionate about your care for one another and your care for your neighbors. And I think that's something to embrace. I wish I had the personal experience to be able to say that I've lived next to a short-term rental. I have rented short-term rentals when I've traveled with my family. And it is a lot nicer to be in a neighborhood where I know it is going to be quiet. I know we can go to sleep. I feel safer than if I'm somewhere else, a large hotel or a resort or something. So it is, it is very difficult. I don't know if you've all had an opportunity to talk to the applicant about what some of your expectations are, if you can have a way to get a hold of the property manager when you do have issues. I would encourage you all to talk to one another about that and make sure that you've got a good line of communication. Because once I did have that good line of communication with my neighbor, things got better. And it was even at the point where a couple of different times, he got a hold of me. He lived in Dallas, and he said, "Hey, the garage door opener stuck. My daughter can't get her car out. Could you, do you know somebody to call?" And I said, "I can go help her." I went next door and I helped her get her car out of her garage by disengaging the automatic opener. Another time, he asked for some assistance with some other items. So you can still create that sense of community. It's just, it looks a little different. Those are my comments.
You know, I think if I recall, the last applicant that came before us for a short-term rental not that long ago, it was that exact situation that they had rented it long-term and were so tired of dealing with a long-term rental that they were just thinking they'd go a different direction for that reason, that they could, if it didn't work out, they were there for the weekend. Or they could use some of the provisions in a rental agreement and say, "You have to leave now." Which is rare, but it could be enforced.
One point that I thought the owner of the house made that was very cogent was the fact that for short-term rental housing, there is more potential and actual experience of reinvesting in the property. And we all have experience in Stillwater of absentee landowners buying houses to rent to students, and they become dilapidated over a period of years. They do not reinvest in the house. Also, I can totally empathize with the neighborhood wanting to maintain the integrity of that neighborhood. I think the unfortunate thing is, in the core neighborhoods of this town and many college towns, there's transitions. The neighborhood, I lived in the first 10 years, many of the people, many of the neighbors were elderly, and after two, three, four years, they moved out. When that happened, absentee landowners started buying up the properties because it was within two miles of the campus. And the neighborhood that existed there probably 40, 50 years gradually disappeared, the character of it. So it's, it's a difficult problem for college towns to deal with. There's no easy answers, unfortunately. But I think the comments that a couple of the council members has, the commissioners have made about with short-term rentals, if there are bad actors, they can usually be pushed out. When you have a long-term rental, a bad actor, again, they mentioned, it's difficult to take care of that issue. So I think despite the argument that it can disrupt a neighborhood, I think the opposite argument that it's less disruptive often and also invest within, invest in the housing stock in the neighborhood, I think overrides some of the, I don't know if I call them extreme, but some of the worst-case scenarios that are often brought up.
Anyone entertaining a motion on this item? Jacqueline, could you put the...
The recommendations.
The recommendations back up?
They're not in your packet. They're going to be on the screen.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Well, if there's such thing as a reluctant motion, I would make a reluctant motion to approve the application. Second?
Have a motion and a second? We shall now vote. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the meeting summary for review and possible action. The regular meeting summary of January 24th, 2023 was in your packet. Were there any additions or corrections to that? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
I move that we approve the minutes. Second.
Have a motion in a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes, 5-0. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or the city attorney for discussion and possible action. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for March 7th, 2023. The last item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn? Motion passes, 5-0. We now stand adjourned.